Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. This is February the 12th, 2018. The hearing for the Labor Committee. I am Councilwoman Shannon Snead, Chair of the Committee. And joining us, we have our council -- oh, he was here. Our council president is somewhere around here. But we're going to start with Erica Stella for District 11. He's here. Brandon Scott, who is District 2.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
My vice chair from District 12. Mary Pat Clark, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from District 14. And then we have Councilman Henry from District 4. And Councilman Chris Burnett, District 8.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have, from the President's Office, Kara Kuntz. And then we also have department heads from the -- oh, I'm sorry. The mayor's office, Karin Banks. And then we have Karen Stokes. And from the Law Department, we have Elena De Petrio. And we also have Avery Eisenstark. And did I get everybody? And Mary Tally from Human Resources. So we are here today to discuss and hear testimony regarding the Council Bill 17-0170, City Officials' Residency Requirements for the Purpose of Establishing Resident Requirements for Certain Agency Heads and At-Will Supervisory Employees, Providing a Certain Qualified Short-Term Exception Defining Certain Terms, Providing for the Perspective Application of the Ordinance, and Generally Relating to Residency Requirements as Limited by the State for City Personnel. The reason that I decided to do this bill is because after knocking on doors and talking with residents, one of their top concerns was people making decisions for Baltimore City residents. Many of them did not live in Baltimore City. And so I think it's important that you live in Baltimore City. You become our neighbors, and so you'll have the Baltimore City's interests at the top of the list for no matter what decisions you're making. And I feel like back in the day when our teachers and our firemen and our police department were a part of our neighborhoods, it made a difference. You saw people coming and going, and they just weren't leaving on a highway after 5:00 when they got off work. So I appreciate all the support that I've gotten from my colleagues. And I look forward to moving this bill forward and more people moving into Baltimore City to grow our tax base, to make our schools better, have more amenities in our city. All that becomes from when people live here, pay taxes, and work here. So thank you all for joining us tonight. So we've received agency reports from the Law Department with favorable amendments. And so would the Law Department come to the front, to the podium, because this is televised to talk about the report and your proposed amendments.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. Elena De Petrio from the Baltimore City Law Department. I reviewed the bill, and I had several discussions with the sponsor regarding the bill. And we were basically in agreement as to most things. A little background, that originally Baltimore City did have a residency requirement years ago that was put in place by executive order. And shortly thereafter, the General Assembly passed a law that originally banned any local jurisdiction from enacting a employee residency requirement. So since then, there's been no such requirement in Baltimore City for employees. But in 2017, another General Assembly bill passed as an exception to that provision that allowed counties to enact residence requirements for at-will supervisory employees, and also required those employees to register to vote in the jurisdiction, in this case, Baltimore City. So this bill is actually the authorizing legislation that was allowed by that 2017 amendment to the state law. And it exempts from the prohibition, again, on residency requirements, local laws requiring at-will employees and agency heads to be residents of the city, and requires them to be registered voters. I think I misspoke, actually, a minute ago. The state law does not require them to be registered voters. It only allows the city to enact residency requirements for at-will supervisory employees, and that's it. Our law requires, this proposed bill would require, not only at-will supervisory employees, but also agency heads to be city residents and be registered voters in the city. Our charter actually already requires agency heads to be city residents and registered voters, so that's sort of a non-issue. The first question that often comes up with residency requirements is whether they're constitutional. They are completely constitutional. There's been many, there's a Supreme Court case on point, and over and over again, other courts have said that they don't violate the equal protection laws or the privileges and immunities clause of the U.S. Constitution. The other issues that I thought, I mentioned this to the sponsor this morning, that I was willing to withdraw the agency head amendment, because it's really a wash. The agency heads are already required to be residents of the city and registered voters. So I have no problem withdrawing my amendment on that issue. The second issue is the registered voter requirement. It's not in the authorizing legislation, that the state-enabling law, that local jurisdictions may require them to be registered voters. So I don't believe that's within the scope of the authority of the City Council based on the state-enabling legislation. And my third, I mean, fourth amendment, our third amendment deals with Section 2, which talks about that it's not retroactive, basically, that city employees who are currently employed by the city do not have to become city residents if they serve in one of these positions. But there was some concern that that section was not clear enough with respect to a current city employee who is not a city resident, who down the road may be eligible for a supervisory position, but they might not be chosen, or allowed to be in that position because they're not a city resident. This section, this language that I'm proposing would allow those employees to become supervisors without moving to the city, because they have been long-term employees already of the city. So that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
But under the law as written, if --
Which law, sir?
I'm sorry. Under the -- well, under existing law, there's nothing. So under the current bill, if the bill went forward, worded as it is now, if somebody who didn't live in the city and didn't work for the city was hired into a supervisory position, they would be required to move into the city, correct?
Correct, yes.
But you're saying, with your amendment, somebody who already works for the city but lives outside the city, if promoted into a supervisory position, would not have to move into the city?
Correct.
So why? What, I mean, I'm just looking for --
Well, because --
Why would that be fair?
That was the concern that I was asked to address, so I addressed it.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And the sponsor indicated that it was not her intent to preclude those employees from becoming supervisors down the road. That was at least our discussion, as I understood it.
Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
I have a question, and I'd like to say something about that last issue.
Sure.
What is an at-will employee?
I think they're referring to the fact that most supervisory employees are MAPS employees who serve at the pleasure of their supervisors, the agency heads in this case. So they are, they don't, they're not covered by the civil service laws. They can be terminated for any reason.
Okay, that's who you're talking about? And I did want to, yeah. I would just like to say that in this instance, you know, we talk a lot about the future and what our kids have to look forward to. We have wonderful, wonderful employees, many of whom do not live in the city, and they're in their jobs. You're talking now about, should they be offered a chance to be a supervisor, still at-will, a MAPS kind of person, not to be covered? The reason I'm not, I don't support that, that I don't support the grandfathering in this case, is that it will lead to another generation of people in charge of other people who don't live here. And it's what, it's like the idea of, did someone say it already, or did I dream it, that, you know, to have people like that living on your block, who are in charge of this and that and the other thing in the city, and can make things happen, that's a really important thing.
Well, I don't think it's as simple as just, you know, picking up your bags and moving, you know, to have to find a pile of things they can afford.
Well, that's what you're asking applicants to do. I hear what you're saying, it's hard. And actually, I'm not going to offer the amendment, but I think that people should have a year to move, in all cases, because it's, if you own something, if you own a house, you've got to find a house, you've got to sell a house, you've got to get these settlements together, you've got the kids to worry about, and the schools and everything like that. It's not easy. But I think that sometimes you just have to do something to get change. And otherwise, it's not just, you're appointing somebody for a year, you're appointing them in a career ladder, and they are in charge now of a bunch of other people, and they're in a ladder to get higher. They should move to the city. I think it's hard to do in six months, but if there were something where they could commit by a year at the most as a condition.
Gee, that's a policy decision.
Yeah, I understand. I'm not asking you to comment on it. I just think --
I think the --
It's how to change the culture.
Potential danger there is just you lose highly qualified people with a lot of institutional knowledge, that you can't just replace by someone walking in the door who has never worked for the city.
Well, look who's, look around, right now. And theoretically, that's a successful situation. People are leaving --
I have no idea what you're talking about, but...
No, I'm city government. Right now, it's happening, a lot. I'm not taking a position pro or con, but we're living through it, because it's a change. It's a change of administration. It's a change of different responsibilities for different agencies, okay? And it's always difficult. But while we're doing things like that, let's breed, let's breed the idea that for our young people and young professionals here in the city, that this is a real opportunity for people who do live in the city. So it's not a debate. I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you. Avery, do you want to speak to some of the amendments that Mr. Petrio has suggested?
I'm not speaking as an advocate or opposed to the bill, but I am speaking to the points raised by the Law Department. I tried to ask them to speak to me today, and they did not care to do so. They've withdrawn the First Amendment, as I understand, so I won't speak to that. But the letter said that that statement is in violation of state law. It's not. It's not because it's in the charter, it's because the state law exempts those folk, that is, heads of agencies that report directly to the mayor. There's language in the state law as elected executive. As to the remaining two, the registered voter, if that is not allowed by state law, then we've got a problem in our charter, because that language comes from the charter that has been there. Heads of departments must be residents of the city and registered voters. The state law prohibits local governments from imposing residency requirements on employees, subject to certain exceptions. One of the exceptions is, as in the bill, heads of agencies who report directly to the mayor. Another exemption is supervisory employees who report directly to the heads of their unit, or to the mayor that fits in. It does not say you can't impose a residency requirement as well. In fact, the law is that in these cases where residency is required, what is required is not you actually live 365 days a year in one place, it is domicile. Domicile is found based on many, many factors. One of the principal factors, oh, excuse me, the state, the court cases have clearly said domicile means, or residency means, unless otherwise specified by the imposing government, domicile. Domicile, one of the key points, that is one of the primary points of what is one's domicile, is where is there, where are they registered to vote? So requiring it is well within the scope of the law requiring residency. And it's in our charter, and I dare say, it is not fair to say that that charter provision requirement is in violation of state law. As to, as to the grandfather provision in the bill, that language, and it may be a little unclear, but that language is taken directly from the language in the state law, which was amended to say in Section 2, be it further enacted, that a local law ordinance or policy enacted or adopted in accordance with this act shall be construed, and from here on, the language is precisely what's in the bill, shall be construed to apply only prospectively, and may not be applied or interpreted to have any effect, et cetera, et cetera, which is the language that was put into the bill. I spent many hours working on this and researching this bill on behalf of the council member, chair, et cetera, to make sure that it worked. It incorporates charter language, which I think is permissible, it clearly is, because it's not forbidden. You're allowed now to impose a residency requirement. You can define it, you can do it how you want, and that's what the city has already done in its charter provision. Second of all, this grandfather provision, the intent is just the opposite of what the Law Department's amendment would say. It is saying that if someone is currently in a position that is subject to this residency requirement, the local government can't, must state that that, if that person is a person appointed, excuse me, head of an agency reporting directly to the mayor, or an at-will supervisor, and it's only at-will supervisors who report directly to the mayor or the head of their unit, that's in the bill, if they are in that position before the effective date, they may continue in that position. It does not, it's not intended to say that if they're in a, just any position, and then after the effective date, they get promoted to another position, it's talking about the continued employment in the same position. It does not say that they don't have to comply. And the amendment would say that, and I don't think it's intended. If you think that the language that's in the bill isn't clear enough, I do have language, I've not been able to do it up, because I just discovered this Sunday, when I was reviewing the bills, the reports that came in, and I tried to contact the Law Department. But I can prepare an amendment, I won't have it today, that would amend that grandfather clause in the bill to refer to that it does not affect any individual who, before the effective date of this ordinance, is employed by the city in a capacity and as, and quote, "official" as defined in this ordinance. It does not apply to someone who's already in that position. You can't suddenly say fairly, now you've suddenly got to be a resident as soon as this charter amendment is there. You can continue to serve. It's, but it certainly does not say, and is not intended to say, as the proposed amendment from the Law Department, that if you're in a janitorial position, forgive me, janitors, I don't mean to malign you, but, and you don't live in the city, that if you're then later, five years from now, appointed to a at-will supervisory position, reporting directly to your unit head or to the mayor, that you are not subject to this new law. That's a change of facts. It's not a grandfather. I could write that up, but I think that was what is implicit, and that's why initially I copied the language that was in the charter, which specifically says, "The local government must provide," and I quoted the language.
First, let me introduce --
I could write it out, by the way, on, by hand, before I leave. If you want to vote, if you're voting tonight or not, you know, I don't know.
Hold on for, hold on for one moment. First, I want to introduce who entered the room, Councilman Yitche Schleifer from the 5th District. And then, hold on, because you want to follow up to that question, this is not a new question. Councilwoman Clark.
Yeah, I just want to follow up to what he just said, to see if I got it straight. Because I just want to be sure. So what you're saying is, the intention of this bill, as you drafted it, is that people who hold eligibility, supervisory at-will jobs now, in government, are grandfathered in, they don't have to move.
Right.
But that even if they, or anyone, is subsequent to the passage of this bill, the enactment, moved newly into a higher, or their first supervisory eligible job, they would have to abide by this rule, by this law. They would have to move.
Otherwise, no one's covered by it.
Well, yeah.
That's what I'm, that's why this can't mean what the Law Department said. Otherwise, then who is an at-will supervisor that's got to live in the city?
Well, that's, we'll have another generation of --
You have to wait for a whole turnover of employment, whether they're supervisor or not. That is not what --
So that's what you're saying was supposed to be drafted?
Yeah, I could, I could give you language that says that expressly, that amends this expressly. I could, as I said, I could write it out by hand as neatly as possible, so you have something in writing, and then if you approve of that, you know, whatever you decide, and then we could type it up for the floor, you know, as a committee amendment. I'd be glad to do that. It's unfortunately that we were not given the time to discuss this, which I think is a, never mind.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Avery. We'll come back to it, so. So go ahead, Councilwoman Stokes, you have a, who's your?
I have a question, well, I need to ask the Law Department, somebody come up. The Law Department.
Elena, Elena De Petrio, or are you talking --
Whoever. I just have a question to ask, and then I have a statement to make, for the Law Department. Yes, mhm.
Yes, sir.
Um, just a question. Do the state law exempt agency heads from being exempt?
I do not know, I'm sorry. I don't, I'm not going to answer that question.
Okay. Well, I believe the agents, the state law says that agency heads are exempt. But if the agency heads are exempt, what does the council have to do, remove that exclusion? What role does the state play? Because the state is the one that, the player in this. Because the law comes from, yeah. If the agency heads are exempt, what do the council have to do, remove this exclusion? And what role does the state play? Because the state is the one that --
Well, the state has enacted a law that says that you can't have a local government residency requirement. And then they enacted an exception to that law that says you may have one for at-will supervisory employees. So this bill now is exercising that option.
Yes, it says at-will, but it excludes agency heads, the state law.
The state law does initially exclude agency heads from the general prohibition against residency requirements. So, in other words, that allows local governments to require agency heads to be city residents, and we already do have that requirement in our charter.
Thank you. Can we have, does anyone have any more, further questions? No, no. Okay. Can we have Human Resources? Because we've received agency, we've received agency reports from Human Resources, who actually oppose the bill, so can you come up to explain?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. So the Department of Human Resources opposes the bill for several reasons. While we understand the council's intent to have, provide better opportunities for employees and residents to serve and represent the communities in which they live, it does impose several barriers that we would have to overcome. To include, currently, right now, there are 145 employees that would be impacted, or 145 positions across city agencies that would be impacted by this bill. Currently, one of our primary competitors, as most of you probably know, are private sector employers. It would be difficult, based on our current compensation structure and our total rewards package, which includes not only your salary, but your benefits, and any other employment incentives that the city is not able to offer. It would be difficult to compete with those employers. Additionally, some individuals may have a concern about accepting positions within city government because of administrative and legislative changes, in terms of when there's a new election cycle, who's voted in and who's not voted in, could impact their employment positively or negatively. Another issue that comes to mind is that it would significantly increase the city's recruitment cost in terms of reaching out and sourcing candidates from across various areas, and that can be an expensive proposition. Additionally, relocation would have to be considered in many instances for people at this level. So we're talking about classifications that include executive directors, I'm sorry, can you hear my voice? Operations officers, operations managers, thank you, operations managers, as well as chiefs of staffs in positions at that level. They are usually accustomed to, particularly in private industry, relocation packages that may include transportation to move their household goods, and in some cases, employers provide for purchasing their homes and selling their homes, and other -- homes and selling their homes, and other, and other costs. Typically, an executive recruitment of that nature can run anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 in relocation expenses. In addition to that, it would increase employment cost. We would probably have to increase our salaries to be more competitive with private sector in order to attract and retain that classification of employees. And those employment costs not only include the employment costs for the recruitments, the new candidates, or the new hires, but it would include increased costs for existing employees, because our salary structure may have to be altered to accommodate increases in their pay to comport with the Equal Pay Act. In addition to that, most of the positions, or actually, all of the positions that fall into that classification of work, require a minimum of a bachelor of science degree. Currently, 72.3% of Baltimore city residents do not meet that minimum qualification. So these individuals would have to be trained up, and/or they would have to meet the minimum In addition to that, there are three primary feeder groups for Baltimore City in which we tracked employees from, and that is Baltimore, Montgomery, and Prince George's Counties, none of which impose residency requirements at this time.
So I just caught something really quickly that you said. You said 145 employees/positions, but I think you sent over something that said there was 154 positions earlier when we asked this week. You sent over an email. So I'm curious to when you found out that the number had changed.
I believe Finance ran some additional numbers, and they came up with 145.
But when did you find out that that was a change? Because that.
Friday evening.
So Friday evening, you found out that there was a change, and now we're today, and we're just now finding this out. So it's not policy when you find out something that we had specifically asked for, that you don't send over the information right away?
Well, I didn't think to report it right away, because I knew I was coming to this meeting.
You guys have not been, the Human Resources Department has not been helpful at all with drafting this bill. I think we asked in October for numbers, and we just got the numbers, I believe, last Thursday, and now there's additional, the numbers changed, and no one says anything. I think that's horrible to do.
I can assure you that we are responsive. However, when I received the initial inquiry, I requested and suggested that the council's office contact the Chief of Staff.
And so you're putting it on the Chief of Staff to, because we emailed.
The Chief of Staff requested to be involved.
I think we sent a number of emails, and if that's the case, that the Chief of Staff and Human Resources get the information back to us. And again, this is October, a whole, a number of months have gone past, and nothing. And we've also asked for a breakdown of each of those departments to include the title of the positions affected, and we haven't received anything. So I would like for those particular positions that you're talking about, if you can get those over to us in writing.
Okay.
By department and title. And can you have those over to us by Friday?
Sure.
Okay. Can we take note of that, so we make sure that they have it by Friday? Because this has been horrible, when it's trying to get information from them, and take note that they're blaming it on the Chief of Staff, the mayor's Chief of Staff, for not having the information to us.
No, I didn't say that. I said I referred the council's office to contact the Chief of Staff.
And so when that email went out, that they were CC'd on, that everyone was CC'd on to ask for the information, no information came over, though. Nothing came back to us. And so is it not our policy to follow up, to say, hey, Chief of Staff, are we going to get this information back to them? They're asking for the information. That's just not policy. I'm just trying to figure out what the policy is and how it works.
I'm sure that the Chief of Staff would have been pleased to have a conversation with you, or whomever you designated.
Do we have note of this, so we now know in future? Can you come up to the podium, please?
Karen Stokes, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Ms. Chair, we've had some confusion understanding some of your requests, and trying to sort of winnow down exactly what it is you're asking for. We will take care of this. Part of the problem is, some of this went to the Chief of Staff, some of this went to our office, some of this went to other agencies. But you will have this before Friday. I think that, as Director Tally said, that the slight difference in numbers between Friday and today, we didn't think that was going to be impactful. But we'll have information for you before Friday.
Thank you. And so, one of my next questions is, when you say, why would the city's reward package become competitive to attract or retain qualified candidates with the passage of this legislation?
Because I would imagine that some of your candidates would come from outside of this jurisdiction, and in order to get them here, that would require relocation expenses.
Okay.
It's very common.
So why would the candidates feel that the other positions are more tenuous during the meritorial transition with the passage of this legislation?
I didn't understand the question.
So why would the candidate feel that their positions are more tenuous during the meritorial transitions with the passage of this legislation?
Because they're subject to appointment. Agency head positions are subject to the mayor's appointment, as are other elected officials. They serve at, employees that work for them serve at the pleasure of. So that means that, under a new administration, those individuals could be replaced.
But they still have to live in the city?
Well, not, well, yes, but not because they have to live in the city.
Okay. When we talk about data, how much would recruitment and employment cost would significantly and progressively escalate? So can you talk a little bit about, a little bit about that?
It depends on the position. I don't have numbers at this particular time. That would be a projection, and I didn't make projections. I was not asked to provide those.
Okay.
I was stating hypothetically, in my professional experience.
So if we can have those numbers, because I just can't figure out if you have, if you're advertising for one position, and you're using the net or whatever resources you use, how that would change? Like, does the system change? I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, some recruitments may require an executive search firm. That's not unusual either. And I know in the past that the city has used executive search firms, that they charge a fee for placements. And sometimes it's a percentage of salary, sometimes it's a negotiated flat rate. It depends on the position.
And so you also mentioned a lack of educational requirements that Baltimore cities, Baltimore city residents just don't possess. And so, yet, we don't have a problem, you know, currently filling some of these positions are, do we?
I don't understand the question.
So you say that because our, again, you also mentioned that lack of education requirements that Baltimore city residents possess, yet, isn't that a problem that we currently face now? We currently face this problem now?
I don't think it's necessarily because of lack of educational requirements. There are a number of different factors that go into making a selection, and/or as to why people may or may not apply for a position.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. The 100, I'm going to go with the 145 number for now, the 145 positions. According to the mayor's website, there are 43 people in her cabinet. So I imagine they would be at least 43 of the 145.
Correct.
And then, the other 102 would be people who are direct reports to them, as long as they actually themselves supervise people. So special assistants, administrative assistants, they would not qualify for this.
Correct.
Okay. So here's my first question, and I understand that this is not something that you have on the top of your head, but I would appreciate if this information could be sent to the committee. Could you give me the salary range for those 145 positions? What I'm especially interested in is the low end, and the number I'll be very upfront with looking for it in relation to, is how many of the people in this 145 make less than the $67,000 a year that city council people make? Just out of curiosity. But in terms of speaking to the philosophical point of whether or not we should be requiring supervisory employees at that level, not supervisory employees buried down somewhere, you know, in the agency infrastructure at ground level, but people who are direct reports to the mayor herself or to agency heads. The whole point, as I understand it, that the sponsor has for this bill, is addressing concerns from citizens of Baltimore who are unhappy that people making decisions that affect their lives don't live here.
I understand.
And at the end of the day, I don't know how we can make that any more straightforward or simple. If you care enough about Baltimore to work here for less than your worth to the private sector, you've already made the decision that this is public service, and that you're making, you are likely making a sacrifice already if you're one of those 145 people. But if you're not willing to live here, as far as I'm concerned, that's going to make it hard to justify to our constituents why you should be in the position to be making those decisions. So, thank you.
Understood. Any other questions? Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ma'am, good evening, Director. How were you this evening? Just a quick, just a quick follow up to Councilman Henry's request. When you send that information over, could you provide it broken down by agency? Like, how many are in DPW, how many are in the police department, so that we can see by agency the numbers? Thank you.
Sure. No problem. Councilman Costella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Tally, did we, please pardon me if someone already asked this, but did we ask the number of that 145 employees that currently live in the city?
There are 77 that currently live in the city.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, thank you.
So, does any, go ahead, Councilman Scott.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I was in the hallway dealing with a breaking matter. But just to follow up, my colleagues informed me that you guys have said that the police department would be exempt, and maybe this is a question for law. Can someone explain to me the exact reasons why they're exempt? So I get it, if they're a lieutenant, right? They are union protected. But it's my understanding that captains and above are at-will employees?
Can you come to the, because it's publicly.
The police commissioner, I believe, I don't have the law in front of me, but is, has authority to hire under the public local law, which is enacted by the General Assembly. So we cannot, as a local government, city council, at the city council level, change the local, public local law.
So, thank you. And as you know, Mr. Petrow, I'm very familiar with that provision. So my follow up question on that would be, so the employees of the police department, are they not considered city employees?
I think Ms. Tally would probably be better able to answer that question. I do not know.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Tally?
Yes, they are considered city employees.
They are?
They're funded, their salaries are paid by the city, yes.
So I'm just hoping I'm not the only person in the room that thinks that this is ridiculous. But, more importantly, Ms. Tally, if someone could get to the committee also, because my understanding is that, I think that Mr. Petrow is exactly right, but my understanding is that the protections as far as union, et cetera, only last to the rank of lieutenant, and that, for example, captains and majors are under maps, and they're not, if I'm correct, right? They're under maps, and they should be at-will employees, which means that the police commissioner can terminate them at-will?
They are at-well.
They are? Can you, can you provide us, or us, us that provision, no matter where it is, to provision about that specifically?
They're considered command staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll get it to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from anyone?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Nat.
Thank you. Just a really quick question. I see we have Finance in the hall. Would it be possible to provide the committee, along with the salary data, the income tax taken out of their checks that has gone to the jurisdictions in which they live? Because I think that's another important element to this, in that you are, we are essentially subsidizing potholes, vacant buildings, trash pickup, all of the things that our constituents want here in the city, is, that revenue is going to Baltimore County, Anaruno County, Howard County, of which our constituents remind us a lot about how much things run a little bit smoother from time to time there. And I'm saying that lightly. So I think all of the revenue that we can keep in the city would be important, and it would be helpful to know how much is actually leaving Baltimore. Thank you.
Understood.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now going to have public testimony.
The first person up, Ms. Sarah Matthews.
Good evening to the committee. My name is Sarah Matthews, and I am a legal resident of Baltimore City. I would like to thank the committee for giving me an opportunity to voice my opinion on this most important bill. I am here in support of this bill of a residential requirement, especially when it comes to a residential requirement as it relates to working for local government. I have lived in Baltimore for approximately 30 years, and I migrated here from Chicago. Chicago, like Boston, and Gary, Indiana, all have residential requirements to work in their local government. Not only is it a requirement for the supervisory and head of agency staff, it's also a requirement for all municipal employees. We should view residential requirement here for municipal employees as an economic indicator, because if we hire from within Baltimore, we have monies coming in and none going out. Also, when you hire from other states and jurisdictions, you have those employees with vehicles. How many of them have vehicles? There's maintenance on those vehicles, there's gas on those vehicles, so that's money going out and none coming in. When individuals obtain employment, they usually hire their friends and their friends' friends. For example, the article about the Department of Transportation had last week, who was hired by the mayor, and she hired two other employees from two previous jobs. All three employees live in DC. And I understand, as of today, one of those individuals hired another. And I understand, as of today, one of those individuals hired another individual from DC. So that's four employees from DC, and the salaries in the paper were, maybe came to like $500,000 per year for those individuals. They are spending their tax dollars, their monies, in DC, not in Baltimore. The politicians have a responsibility to the city residents who you campaigned and asked us for your votes. This is an accountability issue I think we need to hold you to, and that's getting the most qualified and accessible employees to protect our interests. And I don't see that happening with employees who have to ask me the name of a street or take a bus ride so that they can see what's going on in that community. And I'm sure that most of those individuals who were on that bus tour to visit the neighborhood that they represented is not going to be knowing how to get back to that street. And so, when you ask us to vote for you, you're, are you saying to us, committee, that we are good enough to vote for you, but we are not good enough to work for you? I heard from the previous speaker about the educational credentials that we have and we do not have. If you have ever lived in Baltimore for any period of time, you know that Congressman Cummins has a job fair. That job fair is usually four or five blocks long with people with educational credentials such as bachelors, masters, and so forth. So, I don't think that that is an accurate assessment. Maybe some of you know this and some of you do not know, in my previous job, I was a job developer. I had many of employ, people who were looking, applicants who lived right here in Baltimore City with years of experience, several degrees, including PhDs, they are looking for a job. We don't need to have, I don't want to have my elected official to come and say, can I put a sign in your window? Yes, you can put a sign in my window, but what are you going to do for me when it's time for me to get a paycheck? I'm going to have to be looking in DC, looking at transportation, all of those things go into me having, because the jobs are not accessible here, I have to go other place to look for a job. I understand that there may be specific skill sets and expertise that may be sought, needed to be sought outside of Maryland. Therefore, like Chicago and the other two states that I mentioned, there should be an exemption and/or a waiver that should be evaluated via a special committee. Residential requirement is no different than asking a lobbyist to lobby on behalf of a pharmaceutical company, or no different than the city having a legislative person in Annapolis to lobby for city interests. A residential requirement to work in local government will guarantee that the residents will get, get an opportunity to become gainful employed and support the mom and pop store around the corner. Because if I live in DC, I'm not going to go around the corner and get a loaf of bread to help keep my and pop store open. I'm going in DC and help them to keep their mom and pop store open. Residents, I'm sorry, residents need to help mom and pop grocery stores business to stay open. The law would allow Baltimore to increase the population by encouraging families to move into Baltimore, not move out. For an example, an attorney in Gary, Indiana, moved to Gary from Chicago because there was a requirement. She wanted the job, she wanted to help contribute to the tax base, and she moved to Gary, Indiana, where she was given a job and where there is a requirement. I would like to commend this city council for your work that you've done and to consider bills and legislation that the community have been talking about for years, but it's been business as usual. It is just astonishing to sit here and to hear individuals in this room defend people who do not live in Baltimore City but work here. We deal with the crime. I have to take the public transportation home, so if I get stuck up and shot, it's okay because I live here, I care about this city. But a person who's unwilling to live here but work here does not need to have a job in local government. There are a lot of residents who feel the way that I feel, and I'm asking you to pass this legislation. Don't assume that because we live in Baltimore City and that we are labeled as uneducated, undereducated, that we don't have skill set that we can, that can be used in the mayor's office. That is a total force, and it should not be mentioned again because there are a lot of talent and individuals with skill sets in Baltimore City. And I think that to enact this bill, first of all, is a good idea, and it should be followed with all employees. Because there are other states who require all employees to be residents of the city that they want to work and represent. Don't ask me for my vote if I'm not good enough to hire. Don't ask me for my vote if you do not support this bill today. Because we don't often get a chance to come and speak in front of the city council, so I'm speaking for my neighbors, I'm speaking for my friends who've been unemployed for two and three years. We just very recently was able, through a suggestion that I made, to get HR to come out into our community. So, who, we don't know about these jobs until we see them on TV and we are introduced to this person or that person who's making all of this salary. We need jobs in Baltimore. We are not illiterate, we are competent, we are talent, and we are ready to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Tim?
Thank you to city council for introducing this bill, and thank you in particular to Councilwoman Snead for championing it.
State your full name for the...
Absolutely. My name is Tim Pajee, and I work in education here in Baltimore. I work for University of Baltimore, which produces plenty of degree-bearing citizens. I am a participant in local culture, I'm a voter, I'm a pedestrian, a bus rider, I'm a homeowner in Johnson Square, I live on the corner of Preston and Greenmount. And as a homeowner, I also pay impressive property tax every year, on time, at a rate that is twice as high as my counterparts in the county. Now, it seems to me that as I review the payroll data that the city recently provided, that if you look at it like I do, a significant portion of my tax dollars are prioritized to support the financial health and high-quality lifestyles of residents from different counties. As the data suggests, nearly half of all city employees live outside of Baltimore City. The data also demonstrates that a majority of the high-salary jobs, which tend to include better benefits, better pensions, higher-level responsibilities, tend to go to those individuals in the county. As another city council member has pointed out, there is in fact a median difference of about $20,000 per annual salary between city employees who choose to reside in the city and those who choose to reside in the counties. The salary difference is not only an income discrepancy, but it also implies a leadership discrepancy, as the individuals who are more in charge have less personal investment and less personal knowledge regarding the city, as the last speaker pointed out very well. Anecdotally, I have in fact often observed a kind of resentment towards the city and towards the people and culture of the city in some Baltimore City employees. By requiring employees who are paid by the city to live in the city, we will not only retain those tax dollars for our own and encourage a culture of city living among our leaders. We will eventually, ideally, get around 8,000 new residents who already have good jobs. New neighbors, new individuals invested in the political process, new residents to support local cultural institutions, ride our buses, send children to school, walk the sidewalks. We were all intrigued by the prospect of Amazon bringing new jobs to the city, even to the point of offering them tremendous financial incentives to do so. But in the case of this residency bill, Baltimore gets all of those benefits I discussed before without spending an additional dime. Just by prioritize the money we already spend. Let us not dismiss this bill by prematurely worrying over the particulars. For some, it will surely be inconvenient, but if we focus on the particulars at this early stage, we miss out on its vision. Also, let us not pretend it is not, that it is an out-of-nowhere revolutionary idea. Plenty of American cities, as has been pointed out, have residency laws of some sort in effect currently, including Boston, Minneapolis, DC, Chicago, et cetera. And on that note, would it not make particular sense that in a city that is uniquely not incorporated into its surrounding county, enact such a law? It will limit the talent pool, you might conclude, but would it? If you were the director of a museum, would you hire a talented curator who would never attend your museum? If you owned a restaurant, would you install a head chef who would not only never eat there, but who would never let their kids eat there? And who, at the end of their shift, ran for the door hastily knocking dishwashers and cooks out of the way? What kind of message would that send? I don't have time to address how Baltimore's history plays a part in this, but I'm well aware that it does. Many historians, artists, politicians, and citizens have noticed, have noted that for decades Baltimore has been guided by policies that are often motivated by racial prejudices and that often tend to favor people who do not wish to live here. I will admit that in a perfect world, we will not require this bill, but this is not a perfect world. This is Baltimore. And if we're serious about changing the narrative and the reality in order to improve life for our citizens, then we must commit to bold steps such as this one proposed by Councilwoman Snead that provide solutions to Baltimore's systemic challenges. It is bills like this that have passed and given time can contribute to once again restoring Baltimore's status as the crown jewel of Maryland. Thank you for your attention. Bye.
Tim, would you like to actually submit your written testimony so we can have it for the file? Okay. Perfect. Does, anyone who's here who didn't sign up to speak would like to speak? Avery, do you want to come up and clarify your amendment?
Can we just move the bill favorably?
Oh.
Okay, this, this... I'm still happy to move it.
Is an amendment on page two of the bill.
Okay.
Bear with me.
So, hold on, Avery.
Is the uncodified provision that this ordinance applies only prospectively and may not be implied, applied or interpreted to have any effect on or application to the continued employment of any individual. The amendment says, strike the rest of that sentence and substitute so after individual. The continued employment of any individual, quote, "who, before the effective date of this ordinance, is employed by the city in the capacity of an official as defined by this ordinance." That's it.
Okay.
In other words, I think that clarifies the intent of the safety, that if this is imposing a new on your current employment, you don't have to follow it.
Okay.
But it doesn't affect change of employment later.
Okay. Well, we can accept it in later, accept it as a floor amendment. Can I have it? I just wanted everyone to be aware of it. Okay. That'll, that's fine.
I'm just going to make a quick comment.
Yeah, you can make it.
So, Madam Chair, my, maybe I misunderstood, but my recollection of your opening statement about the point of this bill was that constituents had complained that people in decision-making positions don't live in the city.
Correct.
And so, an amendment to grandfather in people in decision-making positions who don't live in the city would seem to be contrary to the very intent of the bill.
Right.
So, I would just...
It is required by state law.
It is requi...
Keep, my...
The language that is there now in the bill in section two is verbatim from a provision in the state law that enacted the amendment for at-will that says, in effect, every, any local government that adopts a residency requirement under this act must provide in that adoption, whether it's a rule, regulation, or ordinance, that, and then pick up the language that's there, is identical to the state law. Mine is a interlineation of language to clarify that this is intended to protect those who are now in the position that's affected but not living in the city, that this is not applying to them. So we really have no choice.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, which, what, what is the section of the state law that you're referring to?
What?
Did you say you're referring to a part of the state law?
The state law?
Yeah. Which, because I'm looking at the state law.
At the ver, at...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Local Government 1201. That's the only thing that I have in my packet.
It's an uncodified provision, as it is here in our bill that's before you. It's an uncodified provision in chapter 772, 776 of 2017.
Oh, okay, that is what I'm...
It said, "Section two, and be it further enacted, that a local law, ordinance, or policy enacted or adopted in accordance with this act..."
I'm sorry, pause, pause.
"...shall be construed..."
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on. Where, where in 776? Because I'm, that is what I'm looking at.
It's section... It's section two of the bill.
Section two.
Second page.
Be it fur-, okay. Be it further enacted that a local law, ordinance, or policy enacted. Gotcha. Adopted in accord.
Construed to apply only-
Only prospectively.
And there begins the litany that is-
And may not be applied or interpreted to have any effect on or application to the continued emp-, I got you. There we go. Okay.
And in our case, employed by, adopted, et cetera, in accordance with the sec, any individual who after, before the enactment is serving in the position of an official, because that's the term we use.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that those, for example, that are within the state law and under the charter are grandfathered in because they've been required under the charter to the extent it's within-
But any of the 66 who are not-
It's basically on the at-will. But the, but the purpose of this bill, I can say one thing, is to consolidate all this within the scope of 776, to consolidate our charter provisions and the statutory provision that we're adding. So it's all in one place.
Count, Councilman Costello, you had, you wanted to make the-
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Avery. Mr. Pietro? Mr. Peach-
Hold on for one moment, Mr. Pietro. Let's vote this out so we can, so hold on for one, for one moment.
Excuse me? Vote it out? I'm not comfortable voting until I ask my question.
Okay, so go ahead, Laaxia. Go ahead. She said, "Show wait." Go ahead.
I, I mean, are we, did, did the councilwoman had to leave?
Yeah. So I'm just saying, I just want her, I just want us to be able to-
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pietro, I'm just looking at amendment number three. I want to make sure I understand this. For, you're suggesting to insert furthermore, any individual employed by the city before the effective date of this ordinance need not be a city resident to be eligible for any future supervisory position that is subject to the ordinance. That amendment is intended to provide clarification to section two, which is the proposed grandfathering clause. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you hit on that for about 30 seconds?
I, as I said before, it is, was my intention because I, because I was asked by the sponsor and others to make it clear that someone who is currently a city employee and cares deeply about the city in spite of the fact that they don't live here and was a hard-working, you know, person that is, has devoted their life to their job, who becomes avail, who becomes eligible for a supervisory position in the future, could be eligible for that position without having to move. You could have someone, well, I won't go any further. That's, that's the, the gist of what my amendment would provide for.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Okay. So the committee will now vote. Is there a motion to move the bill 17-0170? Is there a motion to move the bill, just the bill 17?
Don't we have to move the amendments first?
No. 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 So we'll come back-
Okay, we're going to have all the amendments as more amendments?
Yes. Great. Okay. So motion made by Councilwoman Bill Henry and the second was made by Mary Pat Clark. Sneed is a yes on the bill. Stokes? Costello?
Madam Chair, I'm going to have to abstain. I don't feel like I have enough information on the amendment and I don't believe that there's going to be an opportunity to debate the Law Department's amendment on the council floor, so respectfully, I'm going to have to abstain.
Okay. Councilwoman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark? Okay. Thank you.
Are we adjourned?
Yes. The motion, the motion passed. The committee will recommend a favorable report. The bill will be placed on the second reader on Monday, February 26, 2018. The full council will review and take a vote at that time. The hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.